I think we're ready to go. We'll get started in a moment. We will be getting started. I didn't even look down the aisle. We will get started with tonight's meeting. May I have a roll call?
Trustee Stevens?
Here.
Trustee Myers?
Here.
Trustee Compton?
Here.
Trustee Landwehr?
Here.
Trustee Swenson?
Here.
Trustee Walshlinger?
Here.
President Flanders?
Here. At this time, for any items that are not on the agenda...
Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Pledge of Allegiance by Dan Walshsler.
I didn't know if she knew the words.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Walshsler, I apologize for that. At this time, any items that are not on the agenda, if anybody from the public, public comments for any items not on the agenda. Since we have none, we will then...
I think Mr. Hammer does want to make his comment.
Okay.
I thought it was on the agenda.
You are. Well, you are. So at this time, I was going to call it next, but you can come up and...
Sure. My name is Dan Hammer. I'm the trustee of the land at 1112 Lisbon Avenue, the seven acres in the back of 1112 Lisbon Avenue. And about 10 days ago, we got a call from Officer Sponeyak about a pipe, some type of boundary pipe that got stolen. And he called me up and said if I knew anything about it. He talked to the family at 1112 Lisbon Avenue, the Rodriguezes, to see if they were missing a pipe or if they had found it. And there had been some other incidents. You know, that land has been kind of fallow for the last 40 years or so, and my mother had multiple sclerosis and couldn't get around the land very well. And over the years, kids have come in there drinking, smoking reefers, and you know, we find the stuff in the back there. And okay, but after this incident with the police officer, I called my attorney, and he referred me to Section 943.13 of the Trespass to Land, Wisconsin State Legislature. And in there, it mentions that I have a duty here of enters or remains on the land or another, having been notified by the owner or occupant not to enter. So I have posted the land with no trespassing signs. That's the first time that's happened ever on that land. So there may be some neighbors in the Lake County Meadows that have been using the land, kind of, you know, berry picking or walking or something like that. Because of the two incidents, I'm asking that this board be made aware of, in case constituents mention it to you about why, what's been happening. That's the reason I've decided to post that land, and I would ask, you know, no, not to be hard on anybody, but you know, just, it's not, it's private property. And so I would ask, we're trying to move it, so don't want, you know, crap on it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. First item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes of June 12, 2017.
I make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Second item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payments in the amount of $139,787.72.
I move we pay the bills for $139,787.72.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. For the fire department, I see here that Jefferson Fire Safety, we had to pay $559 to park our truck for them to show at the state fire show?
No. In fact, quite the opposite. That was for the hotel accommodations and to park a private car there. It was a...
But it says for parking place and parking at FDIC. So it's entered wrong.
That was for my vehicle there. They paid for the hotel room. I had to pay for the parking.
For the truck?
No, for my personal vehicle.
Did you park it inside?
No.
You had to pay five...
That's what the hotel cost. That's what it charged to park there.
$559?
No. If you look at the bill, there's room rates on there, and then there's also parking fee of...
483 and then 76?
$76 to park.
Didn't cost me anything.
It's $15, $20 a night.
Really? Oh, that's because I had another question. Okay.
That's it?
Well, for you. But so you're saying that the hotel charges you for hotel for parking?
Yep. It's all valley parking downtown Indianapolis.
Well, it's Indianapolis, not Minnesota.
Correct.
Not Wisconsin, not...
Correct. It was the FDIC show in Indianapolis.
Okay, so we didn't have to pay to park our truck?
No.
That they're selling?
Correct.
Okay.
No.
Thank you very much?
No problem.
My next question is with expenses for public works. Advanced disposal, street sweeping?
Yes.
We're charging them $1,917.80?
That's to dispose of the street sweepings that the village picks up with the street sweeper, yes.
But I always see SweepAll are always there too.
No, SweepAll used to do our street sweeping a number of years ago when the village bought a new street sweeper.
Yeah.
We stopped our contract with SweepAll, just did it ourselves, but we still have to pay to landfill the swept up material.
Okay, for the last 30 days, I saw it out there. So I don't know if it was last year, but I don't think it was like last year. But so we're charging them now to sweep that?
No, no, no. The village does the sweeping. Advanced disposal picks up the material that we swept up, and they landfill that material.
So we're not charging them for the sweeping, just for the sucking up?
No.
We own our own trucks.
Excuse me.
Are you Rick?
We pay them to dispose of the sweeping material in a landfill.
That's picked up in the...
Yeah, we pick up the material with the street sweeper. We put it in a dumpster at the yard. Advanced disposal picks up that dumpster, and they have to landfill that material.
Even when SweepAll did it, you couldn't dump it anyhow. You had to...
Correct. It had to be...
Is that a monthly?
It's whenever we have material that has to be picked up.
Like what? Like what material?
Whenever we have a dumpster full of material, then we contact Advanced disposal to pick up that material.
But a street sweeping, I mean, how big a stuff can you pick up? You can't pick up trees and...
No, no, no. As we sweep up the material, we pick up cubic yards of material throughout the entire village.
Okay, so cubic yards, okay.
Sand, dirt.
Right.
Pet dander and stuff, okay. The idea of loading that up is $1,900 worth of stuff? Our streets must be terrible.
They take the dumpster, they weigh it, and there's a certain charge per ton of material for the landfilling.
Because you can't dump it. That's always been that way.
Correct.
Mike, on the average, like last year and 16, how many times did we have to have them empty it?
I would have to check on that. Unfortunately, I don't have that material.
So this isn't a monthly dump?
No, it's whenever the dumpster is full.
I was thinking $1,900 a month, because this was in a monthly expense. Okay. Thank you.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Isn't that just basically sand and pollen and...
Cigarette butts?
Cigarette butts and so on?
Yes, it's a lot of dirt, but because it's out on the street and exposed to any kind of fluids that are dropped from vehicles, the DNR requires it to be a hazardous waste and then be landfilled.
How do you differentiate between what's village property or our stuff and advanced stuff?
Because they specifically weigh this dumpster when they pick it up. So that's why we call it when it's full.
But I mean, how does a sweeper know that this is advantage stuff and this is village stuff?
The driver is a sweeper.
It's all from village, street gutter lines.
Our sweeper only dumps in one particular location, and then that material is put into the dumpster.
Okay, so...
Everything our sweeper picks up.
I mean, Advanced disposal, how much area do they take up? I mean, they take up like, they got one big parking lot over there, and then they have a building. Are they doing the whole village for advanced?
No, no, no.
No, we're, the village sweeps all the gutter lines, collects all that material together and puts it in a dumpster, which is then collected and removed by Advanced disposal. This has nothing to do with Advanced disposal's own property.
The dumpster's on our property.
The dumpster is all ours, and they just happen to be providing the waste disposal.
Okay, so it's all our junk?
It's all our junk.
And they're just taking care of it?
They're just taking care of it, exactly.
$1,917 worth of our junk?
If you charge by the pound, that's a family. We've been doing that since, you know, because the DNR won't let you dump in the field.
No, I understand that. That just seems like a lot of...
Lots of miles of streets, and they get awfully messed up, the sand and stuff over the winter. So over the spring, they accumulate a lot of debris in that sweeper, like emptying the bag on your vacuum cleaner.
So is that sweeper big enough to cover all this stuff? Because if it's 1,900 for a quarter?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is consideration of actions related to the licensing and permits, actions related to the consideration of the issuance of Class B beer slash Class C wine licenses for the Nixon Park Beer Garden, which we will have a public hearing on, and that public hearing will be open at this time. Does anybody have any comments or discussion that they'd like to bring forward?
This is the first time...
It says liquor here, not wine.
It's a Class B beer and Class C wine.
You know, it's that...
It says liquor license on here. Correct.
What's the C? I haven't run into that one before.
The B and C?
C is wine for restaurants, essentially. You have to have a restaurant classification in order to get a Class C license. Otherwise, if you aren't a restaurant, the only way you can sell wine is if you have a Class B liquor, which is the one that we have a quota on.
Would his restaurant classifications carry for the park?
No. You can't, one license can't serve two premises.
Your site's specific.
Yep.
That's how it got in that big wiggly years ago. We approved the wrong license. We approved a B license when they were looking to sell beer at the grocery store. So that's how that's come about with liquor.
Considering the license, oh, it's, that's part of, the license is the protection in our parks with police protection. I was told last time that it's not necessary because we're not going to have any problems. Is that, are we having any, at least identification down there to show that, that there is not going to be a problem? I mean, there's a lot of things going around in our country, and I just hate to have anybody questioned. I think a lady questioned with, because her kids were there, you know. Okay.
As of right now, we have not had any problems specifically related to it. The officers do go through the park, but to my knowledge, we haven't had anything that was directly related to the activities.
So we do have people going through there, like one time?
Right. It's part of their regular duties. We don't have them assigned. We're not assigning an officer to the park. We're not changing anything staffing wise, but part of their regular duties is to go through that park and just look for any issues.
So if you some ID there at some point, people would see Officer at some point?
They should.
Should?
Yep.
Okay. But there's been no problems so far? Yeah.
Any other comments for the public hearing? All right, we'll close the public hearing. And for Class B, Class C liquor license for the beer garden at Nixon Park?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is granted.
Let me just make a comment. You know, we have a street dance. There's drinking outside. We have no, we don't have problems with police. I'm not trying to infer that there's going to be problems at the park, and I think our police, you know, would do that. What prudent is what's necessary. It's just the idea of the question, you know, just to, you know, make sure we have some visibility down there.
Next item is consideration of applications for operators, bartenders licenses. Operator's license with a term ending June 30, 2018. This is a bartender license, expire in June 30, 2018, for Brittany Cardinal, Julie Preski, and Jacob Henches.
I'll so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those are granted. Next item on the agenda is, in these licenses, is the consideration of a bartender's, operator's license to Mike Orth.
I move to deny the bartender's license.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? There is no discussion. All in favor of the denial of the bartender's license?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That is set forth as we just voted. Next item on the agenda is the consideration for other licenses and permits. We have a temporary operator's license for the annual street dance to Donna Dorrell.
I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is granted. Next item is the consideration for the temporary operators, bartenders licenses related to the hometown celebration, June 30, 2017, Heartland Kiwanis.
I'll make a motion to approve.
For?
I was just going to say specifically it is for Corinne Maras.
Yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Quick question. How many, I know for the street dance, just because I'm involved with it, that they usually have at least three to four people that get the licenses in case something happens with one. How many do the Kiwanis have besides one?
With this would be, besides hers, two. So with, it would be three with her.
There's two other ones that have already passed. Okay.
And as long as one's got the license, that's worth the property.
Well, but if they have to leave the premises or something, you have to have a backup. Okay.
Any other discussion? We did get a motion, correct.
We did.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is carried or granted. Next item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve or request to amend the site plan for the blue ribbon flooring at 475 Cardinal Lane.
So this... Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
What's all the talk about the gravel driveway? And I just don't, are we not going that way and covering the driveway, or is it a matter of not having it paved so it'll go into the swamp, or?
So the original approval from the plan commission in the village board called for all of the driving surfaces at blue ribbon flooring to be paved as part of the recently approved addition. The owner, who is in the room, asked the plan commission and subsequently the village board to reconsider that and allow that the driving area that is used primarily for turning around of the semi-trailers, to allow that to be unpaved or gravel. Two reasons were cited. One was the maintenance issue. Asphalt will tear when it's under a lot of lateral stress. As of course gravel will move, the gravel is more easily repaired, obviously, than asphalt. The other was a suggestion that there is some infiltration that's achieved through the gravel that is not achieved through asphalt. And while technically under stormwater modeling, I think Brian would agree, usually pavement and gravel are treated virtually the same. He nods in agreement. There probably is some truth to that. Regardless, the plan commission considered that, and considering the fact that the village code in this particular district does not require pavement anywhere other than parking areas, they agreed that that would be acceptable to them, provided, as I indicated in the memo, as a suggested condition, provided that the owner maintained that, as he has, frankly, in the past. as he has frankly in the past couple of decades, uh, that he's been at that location.
It makes sense for the, for the water to drain away, I would think.
It's always been a good repair. I mean, you figure, I wonder how that driveway always stays so nice because he doesn't have any business.
He would continue to have-
Smack you.
Says one business owner to another. Um, he would continue to have, of course, uh, pavement at his, his drive entrance and his parking area and, uh, across in front of his new loading area for the new addition. That would all be paved. Any place that there's a vehicle more or less sitting, uh, that would be paved. Just the area where the turning motions are going on, uh, would be allowed to be gravel.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
Can you do the part?
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, there you go.
You're welcome. All right, next item on the agenda is an update from our hearing officer Fred Kelly Grant regarding the FDA coordination effort.
As Fred is making his way up, uh, I'll remind the board that of course, uh, as you know, and the public as you know, President Fanner still and I were able to take the hearing findings to the FDA and to the Health and Human Services Administration and to the EPA in Washington and hand-deliver that. Since then, we've had some email communications and our, really kind of at a next step thing, moment here, it's been six or so weeks since we were out there, maybe five since we were out there, and we're at a point of ready to take another step and make some suggestions to those agencies about how to move forward. So with that, I'll let Mr. Grant take over and describe what he knows.
Mr. Chairman, it's good to be back. I, seems like I spent several years in this room with you. And since then, had a very successful hernia operation, uh, that ended a lot of the pain, but still has me staggering around as though I need crutches and I gotta get a cane from you. This is the, the idea in, in the draft that's here, and I, I thank David for doing a good finesse job on, on what I gave him as a rough draft this morning only. Uh, my idea is this. It's not a mystery to you or anybody else, I guess, if you watch the news, that Washington DC is in chaos. And that's unique, how you ask? Well, because it's this week. Uh, but, but it's more than usual. Uh, and so things are at a standstill in many respects. Uh, the, uh, the whole affordable care thing is finally just coming to a, an end, I guess, this evening, uh, or tomorrow, with the Republican senators that have refused to go along, and so that'll take care of that, and the Senate will leave town, and finally some sanity will come back for a while. Uh, but in the meantime, not much will happen. And my information is that the food and drug people just simply don't know what to do with what we presented to them. They understand what was presented to them, but they don't know what to do with it. And so the idea that I had was to come to you with a recommendation as to what they can do with it. Uh, instead of letting them guess at it, we have in this, in this document, three very concrete suggestions. And there will be one more added, uh, because of some thinking that I did today, and David obviously had done the same, and, and the chairman too. And that is that we will add to this, again, our emphasis, that your emphasis, that the, the regulations should be rescinded, uh, in their entirety and replaced. And, and the reasons for those things are that the only, the only statute that serves as a, as a, a base or a dock to which the regulations could be attached is the Tobacco Control Act of two thousand nine, which was passed at a time that the vaping industry was really just in its infancy. Uh, nothing in that act specifically identifies anything in the vaping industry that should be changed or regulated. As a matter of fact, there are many provisions in there that would indicate that, that what should have happened is an encouragement of it. Because the Congress says that any lesser, lesser, or any reduced harm alternatives to tobacco should be encouraged. So what happened was, the regulations came along without benefit of congressional direction. And that's one of the reasons that you found in the, in your findings that they should be rescinded. Because of the fact that there's no direction from Congress, uh, they're basically just volunteer regulations. And that's not what regulatory government's about, that's not the way it's supposed to be. That's not the way the executive orders read, that's not the way the, the statutes read, it's not the way the Constitution reads. There is no fourth branch of government. Uh, and that's what basically has occurred in these, in these regulations. So it, so added to this language, which is our recommendation as to the type of letter that you should now send to the Commissioner of Food and Drug, to the Secretary of Health and Human Services, and again to the Chairman of the Council on Environmental Quality. And frankly, I would suggest also that, uh, that you include a courtesy copy to the Director of the Intergovernmental Affairs Office of the EPA, because she is the one that was designated by the Associate Administrator to meet with you folks in DC to begin with. She's the one that arranged the meeting with Food and Drug and Health and Human Services. Uh, and I think that keeping them in the loop as to what's going on would be very helpful. Uh, they are the agency that operates NEPA under the Council on Environmental Quality. And as you so well know, after your days here, NEPA is the linchpin of, of coordination. So, uh, somewhere at the beginning of this, uh, David is a fine wordsmith, uh, he'll put in something about, uh, rescinding, urging the rescission. But in the meantime, also here are some things that we need you to consider. We need to, to move ahead and coordinate as to these things, uh, because until you rescind, the regulations are sitting there, we have to deal with them. We know that they're delayed now, but, but ultimately, you have to presume, at least on the face, that they will take effect. And so the first thing is to, and frankly, what I did was try to come up with something outside the box that requires thought. Something that is not in the regulations, something that, that will require them to think about it. I won't go in publicly to, to the details as to why that is, but I think most of you know, uh, from my, your experience with me, that, that I like to require federal agencies to think, uh, at times. The first is a goal that, uh, that nobody disagrees with. Food and Drug has said that one of the goals of the regulations is to prevent, to help deter youth from getting, uh, attached to vaping instruments, because that'll lead them to tobacco. No matter how circuitous that reasoning is, the point is that the goal of, of not, of deterring young people from getting onto combustible cigarettes is one that I'm sure you all share. I don't know anybody in the country that doesn't, given the fact that we're losing four hundred and eighty thousand people a year, uh, from illness and death due to tobacco. Uh, and that's probably a conservative, very con- I, I'm sure it's a conservative estimate. And so the first thing we say is that, look, this is something we can agree with you on, but we don't need to implement these regulations to find a way, because the regulations don't get to the cause of it. The law, the law already prohibits young people under the age of, of, is it eighteen here? It's twenty-one in California where I've just been working. Uh, so anyone under the age of eighteen or twenty-one, whatever the law is, it's already illegal for them to, to enter the stores that sell these things. It's already illegal for them to, uh, to, uh, to purchase them, to, uh, to, to smoke them, uh, so to speak. If the laws today making it illegal have not stopped it, why would the regulations stop it? Because all they do is add another layer of prohibition. The real cause, I spoke to my granddaughter about this, uh, just about a week ago. And I said, you know anybody who's vaped? Yeah? Why do you want to know? And I said, well, I'm not going to report them. Uh, I'm not going to turn them in. And she said, well, yeah, I do. And it turns out that, and so I asked, how did they, how they, how did it happen? And it's what I suspected, because it's the same as when I was a kid. Uh, you either get a friend of yours who's of age, or you get an older relative, brother or sister or cousin, who gets it for you. And why? Because it's cool for them to help you break the law, and it's cool for you to break the law. Uh, so it's just a cool operation all around. And that's the way it happens. It doesn't happen through, uh, anything that the regulations would, would affect. So what we're suggesting there is that there are ways to deal with that, uh, other than implementing these adverse impact regulations. And one of the ways that we suggest here is to consider a program of videotaping and, 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 and in-person presentations by the people, as we've seen, who are of young age, who now say how bad their health was when they were smoking cigarettes, and how much it's improved since they got off cigarettes and went to vaping. In other words, people of their own age who say, look, I lost my life. Uh, I saw one just the other day of a, of a kid who was an athlete, headed for a scholarship, and he lost it because he started smoking. Got to the point where he was so winded and so on that he, he couldn't run anymore, couldn't exercise. And since he got back on vaping, he's developed again, he's, he can now walk, he can do his exercising. Do something that way that, that is constructive from the standpoint of seeing peers who have been through it and who have a story to tell. Uh, and one of the things we suggest there is that there may be non-governmental organizations. We've got non-governmental organizations running around all over the place, talking about how they are opposed to smoking, how they would fight it. Well, let's give them a chance. Uh, and, and so that's a suggestion that we could, that we're making as something Food and Drug can do with Heartland. Do it here in Heartland, because that's what we're talking about, and do it without having to implement the regulations. And then we move from there to a, a second concrete, uh, position. And that has to do with the regulations themselves. Uh, and it has to do with, um, the, uh, impact on local businesses. We know from the testimony that appeared here, and they know it from the findings that they've reviewed, that Johnson Creek, for example, which was your prime business involved, have estimates as to what it would cost them to apply for and get these advanced permits. We spoke with them at, at some length this morning about that. And, uh, and they have estimates, but, and they have a protocol that they've, that they have developed as to what they would have to do in order to put an application together to apply for permission, but they've never put it to paper, and they've never come up with a specific cost for each step. So I asked them if they could do that, and they said yes. And our suggestion, my suggestion to you is that you're suggesting to Food and Drug, that you jointly ask them to do that. That they identify each thing they would have to do in order to develop an application that they would feel would be adequate to get proper consideration as to each flavor of the liquid that they sell. And what would be the cost of each of those steps? Now, when we got that on paper, then we would have a better, uh, more accurate assessment of what it would actually cost for one of these companies to do that than simply an estimate. Because the estimates come from DC and they come from attorneys. Well, you know what I think of that too, so I won't, I won't go into that. But we'll have a more accurate base. And, and they're perfectly willing to do that. Uh, and I spoke with Heidi this morning, and, and she said, yes, they would do it. So that's our suggestion there. Uh, it puts Food and Drug in a position where if they're really interested in gathering the facts, it puts them in a position of getting the facts, getting them through Heartland, getting them from, through your business, uh, and, uh, and having something accurate instead of estimates. And then the third thing is one that's really outside the box. And it's an issue that has not been developed yet, but it's one that I've thought about for a long time. And that is the development of the revenue impact if the vaping industry goes out of business. We talk about the economic loss to employees and to their families, and to what that means to the community. But think about what it means to every level of government if this industry goes out of business. Johnson Creek, for example, I went through with them this morning and didn't learn anything new from what I suspected. There are at least three different types of revenue that are collected from them through the IRS. There are five different types that are collected from them through the state of Wisconsin. With regard to Heartland, you have a personal property tax that they pay, as well as a realty tax, which they pay. They pay a tax to the state of North Carolina under the tax settlement. They pay, um, interstate commerce fees through their UPS and FedEx. They pay export and import fees on anything that comes from overseas. They, when you put together all of the revenue levels that go to the three levels of government, federal, state, and local, and you do it even here, it's going to be a significant impact. If you do it nationally, it's going to be an incredible impact. You have to remember that when, several years ago, there was a political issue in New Mexico, and there was a, a, a definite, uh, attempt by one party to unseat the other party, and they called upon vapors to come to their defense because of the fact that the candidate who was running was opposed to vaping. And literally millions of people responded, and from that New Yorker article, the estimate was that there were ten million vapors who became identified through that. Now, that was in two thousand, whatever, good many years ago. We know there's more than that now. From, from those people and from the industry that they support, there's a revenue base that if suddenly that was lost by the three levels of government, there would be a vacuum that you wouldn't pick up anywhere. Now, one of the things, one of the reasons the states are opposed to vaping is because of the tobacco settlement money. They've become addicted to it, as you found in your findings. But what they're going to wake up someday and find out is that if they do away with vaping, they're going to find that they're going to need that money just to replace what they're going to lose. And nobody has considered that. Nobody has done that three-dimensional look at that revenue-based income that the state, federal government, and local governments get, and they've never pigeonholed it, never categorized it, so it's not something they think about like they think about the tobacco settlement money. So that's our third, uh, suggestion to them. Each of these things are doable. None of them are called for in the regulations. But all of them are justified by the regulations because of the fact that there was no cost analysis done in this case. There were no performance objectives set, as the executive orders said there should be. And so what we're doing is offering them the opportunity to replace, to, to fill gaps in information that they left unlawfully. So based on, 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 on the law, they are suggestions that, to me, make sense. It's going to require them to come outside the box to answer them, and there's nothing better to use coordination for in my book than that. That's where we've had the most success of- That's where we've had the most success over the years, is where the local government has brought up something that the agency has not dealt with, and it gives them a chance to come and hear facts for a change, instead of just political rhetoric. And then the final thing is that we ask them to come here for the meeting, so that you folks can all be involved, so that we get to coordination as it's meant to be at the local level, so that the public can see it, and so that they can get to identify outside the District of Columbia. It's amazing, when you cross that district line, how things change. And I have never found it to be to the detriment of local government to have the agency come to you, instead of the other way around. I've told the story many times of the situation in Texas, where those four little towns would meet in a hall that was probably four times the size of this, and the ladies were holding their quilting bee in the back. And the quilting bee went on during the coordination meeting. At one point, the mayor, who was the chairman that day, sitting as your chairman sits, made a pretty feisty remark about the Department of Transportation of Texas, and the ladies put down their quilts and applauded. And the look on the faces of the suits from Austin was just astounding, as they realized they were among human beings here. I mean, you know, it changed. Let me put it this way, without being sarcastic. It changed the attitude in those proceedings from that day on. When they came to Holland, Texas, population 1,500, and they drove 90 miles from Austin to get there, they came expecting to exchange information. They came expecting to talk. And it really, it changed things for the better, for positive. So that's my recommendation to you as to that. I do believe that we're in good shape. I still don't see any reason that coordination is not called for. The more I read, the more I see, the more I go through the executive orders, the more it becomes clear that this has been the law from the executive to its agencies since John Kennedy's time. And I've even gone back to look to see if Harry Truman didn't have some things to say about it. But basically, Harry was too plain speaking to ever talk in terms of coordination. He just expected them to do the right thing. And that doesn't really happen a lot in government unless you find the corridor to cause it to happen, and I think that's what we've got here. So, Mr. Chairman, that's my presentation on those things. I do, when you're ready, I want to talk about the broader scope of coordination, which you folks opened up with EPA, and which I've been told that they're anxiously awaiting your next presentation as to how we go about setting up a protocol for local governments anywhere to be able to coordinate with the federal agency.
I have a question for you, Fred.
Yes.
I'm a vapor, so I was kind of concerned that they couldn't get the vape anymore. But talking to the store I buy it from, they said they can supply the oil and the nicotine separately, and they wouldn't, you know, they can't sell it as they have been, but they could sell the oil and then a little tube of nicotine, they'll bring it up to the level that you want. Is that fallacy, or?
Is it, no, is it fallacy, or is it true?
Yeah.
I think it's legal. I think it's true. I think they can do that. Yeah, there's nothing that requires that it go through those devices. As a matter of fact, if you find a place you can do it, you can buy nicotine at full strength. There's nothing that prohibits that. Nicotine's not prohibited anywhere. I wouldn't advise you to use it at full strength, because word knows there'd be no slowing you down.
I don't need that right now.
It perks you up, then, if you drink a bottle of it, huh?
That's right. That's right. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
None at this time.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I think he wants to talk about.
Should I go ahead, then, on the other?
Yep.
I gotta leave for a minute.
Okay.
Continue, I'll go.
My idea is this. This is, frankly, I've done a lot of thinking since they said okay. I was surprised that they said okay so quickly and so anxiously. Since then, I've heard other things that make it clear to me why they have, because there are certain elements of the administration that really are trying to find a way to open up this link to local government while they have the opportunity, with the thinking that it may never happen again in our lifetime. And if we can get it in place, and get it firmly in place, then it'll stay, just like everything else. Once you put something in place in the District of Columbia, it stays there. It takes dynamite to move it and to change it. And that's the reason why every time, every time I've used coordination with a new agency, it's a new battle, because they're not familiar with it. And so you have to convince them first that it's not some kind of a conspiratorial nutcase. You have to convince them that, yes, it has been tested in the court. Yes, it does apply. I think I've used, told you the example. When I first used it, it had to do with cattle grazing. And so when somebody wanted to try to use it in the forest, the answer was, "Well, that's only for cattle grazing." And then once we made it work in the forest, then it's only for cattle grazing in the forests. And then when we made it work with fish and wildlife, well, that's for only those three things. And when we got to vaping, well, that's not, you know, that doesn't apply. And so one of the things that could come out of a protocol like we've talked about is a definition that is the same for every agency. What is the definition of coordination? What is to be expected from it? Not just that you sit down and talk, but what do you expect the result to be? And that's consistency under the Council on Environmental Quality Regulations. Consistency between the policy of the agency and the policy of the local government. And it's not out of the question. It can be done. It's been done. We've reached consistency in every single case where I've used this, for land use, for grazing, for the forests. We've managed to reach consistency between the local government and the federal agency without the world collapsing, and without the rest of the world saying, "Oh, my God, what is this going to do to us?" Because the problems in each local area are significantly different enough that you can solve your problems here without it creating problems in North Dakota. The difficulty is that we know, I know realistically, that EPA cannot go out to every local government in the country and say, "We're here to coordinate." First of all, there's the old, "I'm FEMA, and I'm here to help you run for your life." We want to build it from the other direction, a protocol that says that when local government wants to coordinate, here's the process they use. Here's the process they use to come to Food and Drug, to EPA, to Fish and Wildlife, or anywhere else, and it's the same process. It doesn't have to be different just because it's a national forest. Doesn't have to be different because it's vaping. The process is the same. And the process is one of discussion, resolution of conflict, and using every practicable means to reach consistency with the local policy, if it's permissible under the law to do so. And if we can come up with that kind of a definition in the protocol, so that all the local government needs to know is, if they have a, if they don't have a problem with what's going on, fine. They don't have to coordinate. But if they do have a problem, it gives them that procedure to move on and move to the agency and try to resolve it. And what my idea is this, and I've offered this to over 100 people, I mean, I've suggested it, and they're all very excited. These are 100 people I've worked with for 28 years, most of them. And this is the opening that we've waited for, for 28 years. Never came until Heartland. So you are the folk heroes of the entire Western states, all 11 Western states. In fact, they think it's kind of unreal that Wisconsin had to take the lead. And I had to point out that some of the wagon trains started from here. So what I look at is a task force of these 100, and people they would bring in, too. Now, you can't, and I look at Heartland as the lead, and I don't do that to put work on you, because I think it can be done without a lot of work. But I do it because of the fact that you led this thing, and because it does show in DC that you successfully led it outside the traditional areas, and that you're going to continue to lead it. But I look at it this way. Those 100 people are across 15 states. And if the 100 people and the others they bring in are a task force, and then you have one person from each of those states that works with you as a group. We've got a two-tiered system where you will get all kinds of information from that mass of people that gets filtered down into, well, for example, South Dakota has only one person that I know of who's ever worked in this. California, 36. Oregon, 8. Montana, 12. And more coming. I mean, they will have more names. So if you tried to deal with the whole mass of people, you'd be dealing with California, basically, because they'll be able to outvote all the rest of the task force. And I don't think it's that kind of a popular vote situation. My idea is to establish a task force of those people. And then they select a person from their state to serve on that group that works with Now, before I suggest that to them, I wanted to present that to you, because I feel this way. If this is going to work, once, it's like Davy Crockett. Once a character is established, once Heartland has been established, you've been established. You can be the natural leader. California couldn't be, because they were never established that way. Neither could South Dakota. Heartland can, because everybody in the West knows that you pulled off something that nobody thought you could do. And you did it. So now you're the Davy Crockett of the EPA protocol that we would hope that the Council on Environmental Quality will adopt in its regulations, and end up with recommendations from you as to definitions, procedures that can be followed in each case. That way, you don't have to solve the problems of the qualitative analysis of the issues that come up locally. That's not your business. That's not the business of the task force. That's the business of the county in California, or the local government in California. But your business is to establish the protocol by which they can get there without having to spend a million dollars and go to court and get judicial decrees. Now, I haven't really, I know it'll be acceptable, because anything that comes with Heartland's blessings right now, they're ready to do. But I haven't proposed it in this manner until I presented it to you, because I want you to have time to think about it, see if you have suggestions as to how that gets proposed. What I propose to do is, in the morning, I'm going to dictate a video that will go to as many people as I know who have been involved in coordination, rather than just writing it out. And I'll make sure that that is available to you folks to look at before it goes out to them. Because I think that, as much as I like to think this is me, it's not. It's you. This is your boat to float. And so I want to be sure that I'm not doing something from my mind, as to the way I would have always done it, that you're not comfortable with. And that's what I want to report. If you have, what I suggest is that I send that video to David, and he can get it to you folks to look at. Please, within a week or so, or two weeks, get back to me as to whether or not to proceed on that basis, because, well, frankly, I got to face facts. I'm 81, and I would rather do this while I'm still able to do it than to have somebody come along and try to reinvent the wheel again. And I hope to be here at 95 to see it working smoothly. But just in case, I'd like to get it started.
With the rules, the meeting rules, there would be nothing, there'd be no, I'm asking, Dave, there'd be no action that we could take tonight?
Right.
On that?
Yeah.
So we couldn't take any action tonight, just because of the meeting rules?
No, and I don't.
So that will come out tomorrow morning for the full board to be able to review.
Yes, and I didn't want a decision tonight. I simply wanted to tell you what I was doing, and how I was going to present it to you, so that when you get to a meeting where you can make a decision to say, "Yes, let's proceed that way," you can do something.
Right. I was kind of saying it for anybody tuning in or watching, so they know why, that, you know, action can't be taken.
I'm glad you mentioned that, too, because I want to make something very clear. Mark Block and Linda Hansen are here from the Coalition, and I never can get the name of it right, the Electronic Vaping Organization of America.
Coalition.
Coalition. At any rate, they're here tonight, and I asked them to come, because they're the ones that introduced me to Heartland and introduced you to coordination, which you may or may not be grateful to them for. But I also wanted to make it clear that they're here as observers, not participants. This is Heartland's move, and that's very, that's clear to the agencies, and they understand it, and they're operating on that basis. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I, that's my effort for the last, what's it been, eight weeks?
Yeah. Working on it. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, we have been involved in the fight in San Francisco and the Bay Area, and I can tell you that, feel lucky that you're in a land of sanity. I love the area. I actually love it. I even love the fact that there is insanity around abounding. But politically, when you try to do something out there, it's very, very difficult to find rationality. But it's beautiful, beautiful country.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And we'll see that tomorrow, and then we'll be able to go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For taking the time.
Thanks, bud.
Next item on the agenda are actions related to the village's stormwater management and TMDL plan update. First, we'll have the presentation of the Heartland Stormwater Management, oh, never mind, I'm rereading the same thing. It's just subsection.
Any opening comments, Dave, or should I just fire it on?
You know what? So we're, okay, shift gears now, right? We're moving on. So Ryan and Maureen are here from the Village Engineers' Office. As you'll recall, some time ago, the village received a grant to perform probably what is now the third or the second update, the third iteration of the village's stormwater management plan. Recall, this is how, this is how the village manages all of the stormwater, from top to bottom, east to west. We have a permit from the state to discharge stormwater to the Bark River and the various other final receiving bodies, and as part of that, we have to do planning. Of course, you know, Heartland's very good at planning. We do a good job of keeping our Ts crossed and Is dotted, so that's what this is now the effort to do. So Ryan and Maureen have been working on this for quite some time with the Department of Public Works, and it's time to get that update and get the information on where we're at, and get it adopted.
So we have a two-hour presentation? No, I'm just kidding. We'll try to keep high-level, kind of a quick overview, 10 minutes, maybe 15, and allow you time to dig into the details if you have the energy and questions. So I've been the village engineer since 2009, been involved with a lot of your stormwater management activities. Prior to that, my former firm authored your initial plan, which I was involved with. Maureen has been with Rupert Milkie on our team for two years. Formerly, she was with DNR, working with municipalities on this topic, an issue with stormwater management planning. So Maureen brings the background from both sides of the fence and understands this inside and out and backwards. out and backwards. So Administrator Cox shared with you kind of a summary, a one-page summary of the plan. In addition to that, there is probably a ten- or fifteen-page letter report. In addition to that, there's all kinds of cool figures and maps and spreadsheets and modeling data, which is in the link and located on the village's website. So I think you have access to that. So I want to just cover briefly the history of your stormwater planning in the village. Then I want to give you a little update as to where you stand today in terms of your performance of your system. Then I want to talk about what has changed and why are we studying this again? A little overview, then, of our thought in terms of how you should proceed in the next ten to fifteen years. We'll talk about five or six potential projects that you might consider in the next ten or fifteen years, and then next steps. And as the agenda item identifies, looking for an adoption or approval of the planning document so that that can be submitted to DNR by the end of this June. So in 2006, that was the date of your initial permit, when the DNR would regulate your stormwater system. Essentially, what they're looking to do is, and looking for other municipalities to do, is to take care of and filter the water that goes through your storm system so that it went gets to the streams and the lakes, it's cleaner than just flushing all the debris and dirt into those bodies. So in 2008, the initial study showed that you were at an achievement level of about a twenty percent reduction. And that is with a term called total suspended solids. So that stuff that's coming out of the street sweeper, all that grit and sand that's in your roadways, that might have oil and grease on it, that's termed total suspended solids. In 2011, the DNR and the EPA created the Rock River Basin TMDL. TMDL is an acronym for a technical term called total maximum daily load. Essentially, what that means is from Madison down to Janesville, up to Horicon, over to Beaver Dam, those areas within the Rock River Drainage Basin are subject to water quality regulations back to your storm system. So that came into place in 2011, which then caused the need through the village's permit for the village to now study the impact of these new regulations. So it was 2014. So the village obtained a grant, a fifty percent cost share grant, to undertake this effort. So Maureen and I and our team, as well as village staff, have been working on and off on this for 2015 and 2016. And we're here to present to you what the findings are. So what I can say is that there's been a tremendous amount of progress in the last eleven years since you've been under this stormwater permit. Back in 2008, you were at a twenty percent reduction level, target level. That means for all the stormwater that was draining in your system and then discharging to the Bark River, you were removing roughly twenty percent of the grit and solids that are in that stormwater. And you're removing that through various infiltration basins that are throughout the village, primarily on business owner properties and subdivisions. If you see a wet pond or a depression, those are stormwater best management practices which treat this stormwater. In 2011, through additional projects that were done both privately as well as by the village, you were at a reduction level of forty-one percent. Through these new rules that were put into place in 2014, the target for the village now is sixty-six percent. And we're happy to say that you've made a lot of progress in the last five years. You currently sit at fifty-one percent. So over the last eleven years, there's been a tremendous amount of effort, mostly by your private business owners, partially by the village. The map that Ryan's got up on the screen here, I just want to call your attention to your two industrial park areas that didn't exist, you know, two dozen years ago. If you zoom in a little bit, Ryan, you'll see all kinds of colors. If you can zoom in, you'll see a bunch of gold stars. The gold stars indicate one of these stormwater ponds or an infiltration basin, and you can see the majority of the different businesses in your industrial parks have some form of treatment already in place that has gone a long ways towards helping the village to meet its requirement. In addition to a lot of the private facilities that you see out there, there are some public ones that have been built by the village as well. There's two red dots to the south of the Bark River, the Cottonwood Pond, right there. And then further to the west, behind Aurora, there's a facility. Both of those were constructed with grant dollars from the DNR. Other examples of projects. Some other ones that I'll just rattle off, your Sendix property in the parking lot, you might notice those depressed areas in the parking lot where there's a lot of decorative stone and plantings. Those are specifically there to help you meet the village requirement. The Culvers, there's a couple rain gardens that are in place there where the stormwater goes to filter and be treated. The Heartland Service Center recently did an expansion. There's a nice pond on the northeast part of their site. That's an example of these stormwater facilities that we're talking about. In addition, your three new subdivisions, Windrush Sanctuary and Florin's West, they have more substantial stormwater measures that are in there. Those are both wet ponds, infiltration basins. So in all these examples, I guess what I'm trying to say is there's effort that's been put in, which is helping the village get to its goal. In addition, there's been three village streambank stabilization projects have been done over the years in your parks. And I guess I want you to know that over the last ten or eleven years, through my experience and Maureen's experience, and I would say your village staff's experience, the climate from developers, developer engineers, your business owners, residents, us as engineers, your village staff, has adapted to this stormwater burden to be second nature. Ten or fifteen years ago, the tone was, these are going to cost a lot of money, it's going to drive business away, it's going to be difficult to compete with other communities. The industry as a whole has adapted for these to be second nature. It's just a part of doing business and doing projects. And over the last, you know, specifically five years with all the different expansions that you've had, that's been demonstrated. And then I wanted to point out that through the three planning efforts that Administrator Cox referenced, as well as five construction projects that the village has done, all of those have been funded by, I believe it's a fifty-fifty grant by the DNR. So the village has been pretty wise in how to do these projects and take advantage of grant money that's out there. More than just achieving this percent reduction, there's two specific benefits of all this effort. The first is the waters that are going into the Bark River and then obviously downstream to the different lakes is cleaner than it was before these sites were developed. Upstream from you, there are communities doing the same thing so that the waters coming through Heartland are cleaner than they would have otherwise been. More important benefit for the village, we believe, is that there's a lot of infiltration that's occurring in the village, in the subdivisions, on these individual business sites, these rain gardens, these infiltration basins, is causing the water to soak back in the ground and recharge your water resource and your aquifer that you rely on here in Heartland rather than it just getting flushed down a stormpipe in the Bark River and down the Mississippi River to the Gulf of Mexico. That's probably a more important benefit for you as a part of these stormwater regulations. So I'd say that you're on a good track, you've done a great job, you've been cautious in doing projects that make sense. Where are you at today? So with regards to this Rock River Basin, Ryan, if you could go to page eighteen, just want to highlight, there's three primary drainage basins within the village. The blue one on the east side of your village drains towards the Upper Fox, Upper Fox Illinois Basin?
Yeah.
It goes towards Waukesha. The pink goes to the Conomoc River. The yellow basin is the Bark River Basin. Everything within the yellow boxes drains to your Bark River and drains out to the village into the Rock River. The yellow area is the area that the largest burden remains with regards to stormwater treatment, and that's where our focus will be here as I continue this discussion. So that percent reduction number I referred to, that I referred to at about fifty percent achievement to date, the new goal is sixty-six percent. So you've got, in this basin, fifteen or so, sixteen, seventeen percent to go. In addition to the TSS, there's a new nutrient that is being regulated through this TMDL, and it is phosphorus. Phosphorus can be described as a nutrient. It can be sourced from fertilizer, from animal waste, from organic debris such as leaves that would fall on the streets and flush into the storm system. The phosphorus would have the impact of neutrifying rivers, lakes, causing algae blooms and those sorts of things, which is why that is a regulated item. With phosphorus, there's more work to do. The gap there is about thirty-nine percent. So I'll touch on what this means for the village. So throughout the letter that's in the report, our focus has been to be cautious in putting forth recommendations for physical work that are going to cost money for village residents. And the reason we suggest that you be cautious is that the industry has been adapting. Technologies are changing for how phosphorus can be removed out of the stormwater. DNR guidelines have changed to be more favorable in some instances with how we quantify where you're at. Specifically, with all the effort the village spends with the leaf collection in the fall, there's a lot of phosphorus locked up in your leaves, you're getting no credit for that right now. The DNR is currently working on a pilot program to come up with the guidance to create credit for that. So we think that you're going to have a fairly built-in large gain just through the operations that exist today. So the recommendations that we're going to talk about are things that don't relate to those sorts of things that might change to your benefit. Let's see here. In addition, the stormwater ordinance that was adopted last year needs to be updated to include some changes to how development would handle their stormwater. It's not going to be drastically more different than what they're already doing, but nonetheless, those need to be incorporated into your ordinance. The Nixon Park Pond is a very unique situation. It's a natural filter. It takes water offline from the Bark River, through the pond, settles that debris out, and it puts clean water back in the Bark River. The village gets no credit for that built-in filtration system that's doing quite a job with taking the sediment out of the Bark River. One of our recommendations is for village staff and us to engage DNR with, trying to get them to see that and get the credit to the village that we think is appropriate. Lastly, then, the stormwater measures and projects that we've looked at and considered, trying to get those linked to other adjacent projects. For example, if you have a road project that you're going to be doing anyway, and it makes sense to do some of these filter devices in the ditch or on the side of the road, we've looked at it that way so that they can be woven into your capital improvement plan and try to minimize the burden. And then finally, the report would suggest that you continue to seek out grant money. Every two years, there are construction grants from the DNR, and the next application deadline would be April of 2018. So in the summary that Administrator Cox had provided, there was a table of projects. There's two categories of projects that we looked at. And honestly, in the next ten years, five, ten, fifteen years, there's six specific projects that we think make sense to weave into your capital improvement program. There's other projects that were looked at, another ten, twelve, or fifteen projects. The nature of the cost related to those projects and maybe the lack of the technology in place to make those cost-effective, kind of in our opinion, put those on hold. We wanted to present them in your plan so that you can see what the cost would be actually to comply with these numbers, but at the same time, that can be used for your information as a tool as you go into negotiations with DNR on your five-year permits. So why don't we look at sheet sixty-six, Ryan? Sheet sixty-six in your plan, St. Charles Church, Ryan, the middle of the map there, if you could kind of zoom in there. This is an alternatives map, and you'll see a series of cross-hatched areas in orange. And these would be areas within the village that we see opportunities to put in some sort of a stormwater filtration device, to take water that is just going directly into the storm sewer and into the river now, we would take it out of the storm sewer and route it through one of these stormwater filtration systems. So this is a map that would show fifteen or so alternatives. I want to touch briefly, before we leave this map, Ryan, on a potential project with St. Charles Church, one on Progress Drive and Industrial Drive in one of your industrial parks. Want to talk about a potential project near your Hart Ridge subdivision, and I think those are the three that I wanted to highlight. So if you could go to page sixty-eight. About five or six of these projects, we did a little bit more detail work in here in terms of identifying what these alternatives are. So the map that you see there, that orange blob, that's an infiltration basin that already exists on the west side of the St. Charles Church property, and it takes all the stormwater runoff from St. Charles Church through that pond. There's fifty or sixty acres of the Rensen Road, Nixon, the residential area there that goes directly in a storm sewer right past this pond and dumps out behind the baseball field into the river. And this would be an example of a project where if we could coordinate with the church, you could take some of that stormwater out of your pipe and route it through that pond with a little improvement to that pond, get the treatment, run it back into the pipe and out, and voila, you've probably achieved three percent out of your fifteen percent gap. The St. Charles Building Committee is already aware of this project as they are in preliminary stages of planning for their site, and they're willing to work with the village on something along those lines. Page sixty-seven, Ryan, is another example project. That north-south road with the green lines on it is Progress Drive. It's just kind of flat along the edge of the road, there's some shallow ditches, there's some semblance of a stormpipe already there. North of there on Industrial Drive, running east-west, there's some flat areas. There's really not a whole lot of treatment in that area. If you go down on the map a little bit, Ryan, you'll see kind of a cross-section of a potential project which would include what we would call a bio-retention swale. Not the entire length of the ditch, but in certain areas, you'd cut that in on the side of the road, allow the water to drain into that. And that is an example of a project that would make up four to five percent of that eighteen percent gap. Lastly, I wanted to highlight another project, sheet seventy, Ryan. And this is, huh?
You said seventy?
Seventy, yeah, seven-zero. You'll see there, Hart Ridge Drive and Maple Avenue, the entire Hart Ridge subdivision built many, many years ago before all these stormwater requirements were in place. So all that stuff runs into the storm sewer and out into the river without any filtration. And that would be an example, that big orange blob is the potential to put an infiltration basin across the street on the west side of the road, route the stormwater through that, and you'd be getting about a four or five percent reduction credit on that. These projects obviously don't come without a cost. These first-tier projects that we would look at over the next five, ten, fifteen years when they make sense would come at a cost of about eight hundred thousand dollars. Beyond that, that would achieve about sixteen percent of the gap. To achieve the remaining three or four percent, in my opinion, gets cost prohibitive. We documented that, probably two or two-and-a-half million dollars for that little bit extra. For that reason, we're not recommending you do those projects. We're recommending you keep your powder dry and wait and see how this program evolves and do projects that make sense. In terms of next steps, this plan, it is required to go to the DNR, it's a part of your permit that already exists. We're already working with DPW in terms of your CIP planning for the next six years. I think there's the potential that the St. Charles Church project, the Progress Drive project, possibly the Hart Ridge subdivision project could be identified in your CIP for the next six years. Not that you need to do all those projects in the next six years, but there is some preliminary work that we would recommend being done, such as getting wetland delineations done, doing some preliminary design to make sure that the project's feasible. And I would suggest that that be put into your CIP for the next year so that you could apply for grants in April of 2018. If you get a grant, great, you could decide to do the project in 2019 or 20. If you don't get the grant, you could hole off. If there is an immediate adjacent project, like on Progress Drive, there's potential for roadwork there. Either way, whether you get a grant or not, it probably makes sense to do the project because you've got adjacent work. If the St. Charles Church project comes to fruition, that's going to be probably a part of their development project is getting that done.
Isn't that proposed basin, isn't that hillside near me right there?
Just to the upper side of that orange box, it's very steep on the north end of where that is. But where that box is, it's a low, depressed area right there. That is, you know, we're looking, we're using our gut feel, the sighting of these projects as we're looking at alternatives. Once we zero it down to some that makes sense, that's where you would take that next step and do what I would call a thirty percent design. We would vet out wetlands, make sure the topography works, figure out the hydraulics, and make sure it's fully a feasible project before you spend any more money on it or before you submit for a grant.
That's solid.
and make sure it's fully a feasible project before you spend any more money on it or before you submit for a grant application.
That's south of the hill, isn't it?
Yeah.
That piece there?
Yeah.
What do you do with the other side then? I mean, that's just as marshy, but a little, you know, north of it, there's another big area where those apartments are that's marshy.
Yeah, I know where you're talking about.
But this would take care of Hart Ridge.
Very... It was 100 acres, wasn't it? It was a very large area.
It was a large area, and like Ryan said, we do need to do some preliminary work to find out exactly what can be done. And just know that we're not proposing a rectangular pond or anything like that. This just identifies the area that we have to work with. And it could be a series of multiple basins, it could be a dry basin with a wet basin or something to make the best use of that site.
Isn't that site already retaining water and filtering it?
Very likely. The water from Hart Ridge though is being bypassed by there, I believe, in a roadside swale and not getting in there. The areas to the west are coming in.
Okay, so we just increase the flow into there?
Likely.
Okay.
Likely. So a couple of other next steps then, in addition to the CIP planning ordinance update. There's some cleanup work with your ordinance that needs to occur. And we would suggest during July, it'd probably be the second board meeting in July would be a first reading, early August, second reading, to get that adopted. Village staff has already started a process of reach-out to business owners, residents, or neighborhood associations that own stormwater facilities. They are required to do inspections on those facilities and make sure that they function the way they were designed. And it's important for Mike and Darlene, the work that they're doing, to do that because you have to do that to be able to take credit for it. And the village is taking credit for it in the numbers that I'm showing you, so that's an important part of your program. And then lastly, your next permit term comes up for 2019 through 2023. And I believe it'll be next March, March of 2018, when the process starts with the village staff and with our help, working with DNR to figure out what the village would commit to for the next five years. So you're not committing to anything with this document or the projects that are in here or the dollars. But there will be a time when you engage with DNR to lay out specifically what you're going to do the next permit term. And that's where, you know, we're going to suggest that you be thoughtful and...
What do you figure it was for, it was five situation that you went off the cuff, what is that going to cost?
Those were about $800,000. I would guesstimate the public expense over the last 11 years on private-public projects is probably with the streambank stabilization, the two ponds, campus drive, maybe even the ballpark of that same amount of money, maybe, over the last 10, 11 years.
We spent a lot along the river and that.
Yeah, and I believe those projects have all shown up within your capital improvement program. As I'm guessing that these would too. The one that might not would be St. Charles, that might be a little different arrangement in working with the church on that one.
But that would be the place to start, like those grates on streets and that where they're everywhere. Because they're putting in a part of a parking lot, would that help at the parking lots?
At the church?
Yeah.
They're doing a good job right now with what they already have. And it's already draining into that facility that I showed you. As they expand out and do what they're going to do there, they're going to have to document with what we call a stormwater management plan for their entire parcel, which puts in writing what they have, how it functions. They have to record a maintenance agreement with the county register of deeds. And that will follow the property forever into the future, so that stormwater BMP is in place. And many, many businesses and all the subdivisions that have these are already doing that and familiar with that.
But these new parking lots that are going up, even talking about St. Charlie, if you put that grate in like you want to put on the road to drain, would that help in those parking lots to an extent or not?
No, the grate, all that is, is just where the water goes in. And then it goes to a pipe, and then it goes to where it needs to go for it to be infiltrated.
Or is, oh, I thought that was just you put that in and it just settles?
During construction it does, there's a fabric and it filters, yeah.
But I mean, when they put those in the streets, it goes down to a pipe that's laid along with it?
With one exception, you are right that it does settle because the ones in the curb line, they have a two-foot depression below the pipe. So that silt and dirt can sit in the bottom of that inlet. And then the public works department will suck that out with a vac truck once a year, every couple of years.
Oh, I just figured that it was, when you put that in, it went absorbed, but it does go to a pipe.
Of course it pipes.
Okay.
Did you, you said there was, excuse me, that by Culvers, there's one?
There's three rain gardens at Culvers.
The reason I ask is on the corner of Industrial Court and Cardinal, right by Carcraft, the village came along, or when they redid their remodeling, they had to dig the ditch real deep. And the water stops right there at the second driveway. Because the businesses, the two businesses that are beyond that to the south, there's no ditch. So the water just stays at Carcraft, and when it rains real hard, it just goes right over the driveways and it's standing water most of the time.
That's probably the way it was designed, so your ordinance, so there's water quality, which is what we've talked about with everything I've talked about. Water quantity is the amount of flow and flooding. And the village's ordinance requires, it's called peak flow reduction. So if you have a barren field and someone comes in and puts in a development, there will be less water leaving that site after it's fully developed with all the roads and rooftops than it was as a barren field with the way the village's ordinance is set up. So those facilities that are put in place are set up to protect downstream areas from the potential flooding that might occur from more development. Very standard, industry-standard practice. And that might be what's there, is they have to keep that water there for some time before it can drain away.
See, we've been fixing a spot on Rensen Road and Nixon there. Every time they do the road, there's still puddles there. Then they put the St. Charlie's marsh there to catch the water. And it's still, if we get any rain at all, you're going through upcap full of water if we get around that corner. That's been that way for, since Rensen Road's been there.
I think a few years ago, there was a few extra inlets put in there. So as a part of this project, that's something that can be looked at.
I mean, that would be one because it's been that way for as long as Rensen Road's been there.
Did anyone spend the weekend reading this? Just kidding.
I got to a little bit that we got from you in the finale of it.
So the gist of this, the parts of this document are really the description of what the system is like today, how it meets the regulations, and what steps we need to take to get to the future regulations. That is, to the future goal, the 66 you were talking about or the, I forget what the number is for phosphorus anymore. And in the plan, on page 47, for those of you that are still playing along, is the full listing of the 15 or so capital improvement projects that Ryan was talking about that are on the map. It's on page 66 again, for those of you playing along at home. And so the action for the village board tonight is to accept and adopt the report. Keeping in mind, as Ryan mentioned, that it's the first step. This is how we get into planning for our future. And the first time you'll start to see implementation of this is in our conversation about capital improvements planning coming up later this summer. At which point, we talk about the next six years of capital improvements and where those costs are and how that gets funded. And then you'll see it again, implementation of this plan, you'll see it again as we talk in the future with the DNR to get our next stormwater discharge permit, which comes up in March and is a term from 2019 to 2023.
Now, what did they do, they gave you so long to adopt this plan to get to that 71 or?
Right, that's exactly right. They expect you to be making progress, and Ryan and Maureen can comment on this if they need to. But they expect to be making progress. And that's really what I think Ryan was talking about, is we quote "negotiate" our next permit. They would expect to see steps, concrete steps, so to speak, that we're going to take to get towards meeting that final goal. And that's all comes out of this initial plan here. It shows the opportunities we have, it shows the likely locations of projects that we might undertake. So that's why the adoption is sort of the first step in many, many steps of implementation that will take years more.
Now, do you check sediment above Heartland? You know, we did that years ago when phosphorus, and there was more phosphorus that hit Heartland from above than went out when we had the plant there, you know? So and then they say, well, Heartland's contaminated and Bark River, and it isn't, it's coming from the north.
Very true. A lot of it comes from farmlands, from what's called non-plant sources.
Not to prolong the meaning, but they're doing that with Delhart. They clean up the phosphorus and it's coming from, you know, you won't be able to afford to clean it up in your treatment plant. Get rid of what they want.
There's a sister project going on, several of them. One of them is the Economowoc Watershed Protection Plan, which reaches, does it reach into the bark or is it fully?
It's not in the bark, it goes from about Economowoc all the way up through Merton and North Lake and all the lakes.
And what's interesting about that, a large grant was received for that project from the federal government. The Economowoc Wastewater Commission led that effort. What's interesting about it is they don't want to spend a lot of money on their treatment plant trying to filter out phosphorus there. And the farmers are actually taking the lead in the far upper reaches of the basin to do things, buffer strips and those sorts of things, which are going to make a real benefit in that watershed. And so I think that's changing and evolving as well, is recognition by the farming community that there's some things that they can do. It doesn't all have to happen at a municipality level.
I think there's a couple on the Bark River that the farmer has left the spots in between. I think they get paid for that from the government or something, yeah.
Well, they probably would want to retain the phosphorus that they paid for on their own land, the fertilizer crops, so makes sense.
Yeah, the sad part about the whole thing is we're spending millions of dollars, millions of dollars all in Wisconsin to get the water, get the phosphorus out and everything. And it goes across the little chalk line that goes to Illinois, they have no rules, regulations, they don't care. I mean, it's totally different, they have no, they don't have the rules that we have. It doesn't matter. So we're spending millions and millions of dollars, all of Wisconsin, to make our water good. And as soon as it goes across that chalk line, it turns back to whatever they want. And that's what's really disgusting when you're talking about millions of dollars for us to put into, tax dollars to put in to fix something that is just for a little small area of Wisconsin. That's all I had to say.
But the plan is, do they test that based on what is going down the Bark River? Or do they go off of the plan and knowing what's in place to come up with a percentage?
The TMDL report that Ryan mentioned earlier is based on in-stream monitoring. So it is actually based on the existing conditions. And TMDL is basically the total amount of pollution that the streams can receive and still be a healthy stream. So that's the reason that the numbers have gotten so high, because they realize we need to control the pollution going to the streams much more. So the treatment plants have to meet that, the municipal stormwater permities have to meet that. And what they will do to prove that we're getting that far is more in-stream monitoring. So this, the modeling effort that we've done here and the planning and everything is really more of an indicator as to how to get to that point that we can show the progress through the in-stream monitoring.
So based on that, if something did happen where some wave came downriver that wasn't from Heartland, there's a chance that we'd be able to say, hey, wait a minute, something changed really fast and we'd somehow be protected there. But also, if we do chase down what we're doing to keep it clean and make it cleaner, then maybe we can get hold of some of these grants that'll take off the financial pressure on Heartland, and we can kind of chase that avenue and then still be able to dump the cleaner water.
That hasn't happened in the past. They come back, they come to Heartland, and they come to Delhart, and they say, you've got to work on getting your numbers done. Doesn't matter what you do.
And you can't, and it costs you millions of dollars, and you're not doing anything because it's not coming from Heartland.
Well, and that's part of, that's part of why in the Economowoc River Basin, the wastewater treatment facilities at Economowoc made a conscious decision to combat that issue by working in the entire basin rather than just at their plant. Because they recognize that they're not going to overcome it at the plant in any kind of a reasonable way with any kind of reasonable amount of dollars spent. So that's why they took that approach. Economowoc has areas that are impaired, is that the right word? That are impaired for various pollutants, phosphorus among them. Bark River doesn't have that experience, but it all contributes to the same location, ultimately the Rock River, which is an impaired waterway. So that's why Economowoc took that position, they worked in the whole basin to try and deal with the fact that as you're saying, a lot of the phosphorus that comes past our wastewater treatment plants was already there and isn't picked up from the wastewater treatment plant.
But the DNR does not have a set amount that they want. They just come and they say, well, how good can you do? Okay, then that'll be the record. Then next year, how good can you do, that'll be the record. The DNR has no specific goal, I mean, they want to have none, but they don't have any guidelines at all to help the communities do it. And we have to do this work, and you know, Ryan and Maureen have to do this, this work, this study to go to the DNR, and DNR says, oh, okay, fine, that looks good. Because they don't have numbers. They have no idea what's going on. Outside of, they want the communities where they can grab a hold of it, like Delhart. They want to grab Delhart and say, we want you to do that. And what do we figure it would be about 18 million? About $18 million for us to even get close to a portion of where they, nothing. You know, so it's, this is just, it's just kind of disgusting.
Well, you're right in one sense. It seems like every five-year or whatever period of time we're talking, oh, now we moved the goalpost. You got past 51, now it's 66. And five years from now, oh, now we decided it's got to be 78, or it's, you know, no good anymore.
But you got to shut off the problem, and the Bark River's problem is where it starts. And they've been doing that for 20 years, we did that one before we built the plant down there. And it's all farms, and it probably will help the more people that build, all those farms that build subdivisions. Really, because that's where it comes from, and nobody admits it. And the DNR doesn't either, they just tell you eight million dollars. And I said one time to him, just kidding, you can't afford eight million dollars, we shut the plant down, then what are you going to do? You know, there's no solution.
The other solution is, can you spend four million and get part of it?
Well, that's what I mean.
Well, at least we can, at least, Mike, at least we can still borrow. It's not like some people.
No, the program, the program looks good, a lot of planning, a lot of thought in it, but man, it's, we're trying to hold water to screen, you know?
Well, and they're just pretending the facts of what we need to do to be able to get that.
But we got to keep working at it, I believe you got to have clean water, you know, so.
Why don't you guys work north of this?
Well, they know what's wrong, you got to go out and tell the farmer to sell his cows. Really, now you got to be realistic.
How does all the weed killer and all that, that subdivisions like Bristol Cone and those, all that crap they put on their lawns to kill the weeds, the dandelions, how does that go into the wastewater? Isn't that just as bad as whatever the farmers, because I know the farmers are regulated pretty strictly.
So when the subdivisions have, putting fertilizer down, you know, the sprayers, the professionals coming out, you know, with the big trucks, and they're putting stuff down on the lawns, that is supposed to be a phosphorus-free fertilizer. That was a state regulation that went into effect five, seven years ago, something like that. So it is supposed to be phosphorus-free. But there are other nutrients absolutely there that are making everything green and making the grass grow, right? All that, if there's a stormwater pond in that subdivision, would run off and go to the stormwater pond. Ideally, it's settling, it's kind of bonding with the sediment in the pond. And the idea in the stormwater pond is that everything's kind of coming into the top, and then the heavier particles are settling to the bottom. And that's the reason we talked about the maintenance that has to happen on these different stormwater facilities. After 10, 15, 20 years, the stormwater ponds start to fill up with all that sediment. And all those things, the fertilizer and everything is attached to the sediment. That's why it has to be cleaned out or dredged out. If there is no stormwater pond, if it's an older subdivision and stormwater treatment wasn't something that was considered back 20 or 30 years ago, then it just goes down the storm sewer out to the creek, and then it has the same impact in the creek. It's acting like a fertilizer out there. Frogs love that too.
If we dredge a pond, is there a special place we have to dump that soil we take out?
Take it to Illinois.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, and DNR will probably help you identify that location. Yes, and DNR will probably help you identify that location, if there's any spots they don't want it to go, and they'd probably want to see that in the permit application and help find a good spot for that material.
You'll recall, when we dredged the pond at Nixon Park, we kept it on-site.
Made a hill.
And made a little hill, and that's a way to avoid trucking, it also helps with the permitting, but if it has to leave the site, that's a pretty...
Then we had to grow more grass.
That's okay. It grows really well on that stuff.
So, would they need a motion to approve this, the report that they put together?
Yeah, that's going to be the next item. I was just waiting for questions on their speech. Are you, is your report?
We don't want to get, have to think of this.
We can provide clips for hours, but...
So, the next item on the agenda would be consideration of the motion to accept and adopt the Heartland Stormwater Management and TMDL Plan Update.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank, we'll see you again. Bring your checkbook. All right, have a good night. Yeah, thanks, Mike, thank you.
All right, Mike, quick.
Consideration of motion to approve granting of an easement to Re Energies to install facilities on the south ten feet of the village-owned properties at nine-oh-one Manchester Court.
We have to reduce, is beginning the process of upgrading all the underground electric cables throughout the Hart Ridge subdivision from eight KV lines to twenty-five KV, and part of that would go just to the south end of our property at nine-oh-one Manchester Court, so we'd be granting a ten-foot easement and moving the existing transformer, which is real close to the structure, away near the property line, and in turn, we'll have Re Energies plant some screening landscaping as part of that project.
How much are we charging them? How much are we charging them for?
We're not charging them for the easement. It's the movement of the transformer and the screening landscaping is our compensation for granting the easement.
Why do they change their lines? Is it just to increase the...
Increase the power availability and also the reliability.
Okay.
And you got to do that, because the other week, there was about four hours...
A couple shrubs. So, anyway.
I move we...
What are we moving?
Approve of the...
Grant the easement? Granting the easement.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded in any other discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thanks, Mike. That motion is carried. Anybody have any announcements? I'm guessing there's going to be a couple coming up.
Oh, he comes again.
No, I was thinking, because of the...
You're just talking about your guest appearance.
I was thinking of the holiday truck.
Okay.
No, I just want to make just brief reminder that Chuck Delsman, lifelong resident of Heartland, we will be honoring him, his midlife retirement party this Friday at Ironwood Golf Course, from seven to ten. Come and tell a story about Chuck, and this will be the kickoff of the Chuck Delsman Community Fund. That is, money from this fund will be requested by any needy families in the village of Heartland or the Lake Country area that may need help in paying for their children's sports, activities, equipment, that kind of items, or any family that is just in need. So, just want to remind everybody that's this Friday from seven to ten, Ironwood Golf Course, and there'll be plenty of entertainment as Chuck gets a little roast.
That'd be interesting.
Thank you.
Do you want to comment on Hometown Celebration this weekend? I can do it. And just as a reminder to everybody watching around the world, so to speak, don't forget this weekend, Hometown Celebration, Friday night, is fireworks. If, as the weather suggests, it gets a little too rainy, it'll get postponed a day, but otherwise, plan to come down to the Nixon Park on Friday night and stay, so to speak. Come back again Saturday morning for some events in celebration of the village's one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary. There's a five-k run in the morning, there's a history walk going off around ten o'clock, I think it is, various other events and activities with a bit of a historic theme until about two o'clock. And then, of course, on Sunday, the Hometown Celebration Parade steps off one-thirty, the usual route from basically Sendix down Merton Avenue through the downtown to Nixon Park. Encourage everyone to come down and enjoy.
Should be a good time.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Nobody wants to go home?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? This meeting's adjourned.